For Tuesday, January the 10th, we've actually already been hard at work and adopted the agenda for this meeting. As we had a closed session that we've concluded and now we are into the open portion of our committee of the whole meeting. And for those that are joining us online, welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. And we at this point are on to section number seven of our agenda and that's delegations. And this morning, we have the honor of a member of Legislative Assembly joining us for our area, Jordan Sturdy, representing West Vancouver Sea to Sky, MLA Sturdy. Thank you very much for being here with us this morning. Oh yeah, I should also point out councillor John French and I am the acting mayor for the month of January. So I'll be chairing this morning's committee of the whole meeting. So MLA Sturdy, I understand that we're going to kick things off with a bit of an overview of the MLA role. So I'll turn it over to you so you can provide that for us.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought it was probably worthwhile to better understand sort of the various parts of the role of an MLA. Especially for some of you who maybe haven't, we haven't interacted before, but so I'll just give you some a brief overview here. There's a couple of different things that we do. First and foremost is an MLA, your, your work is around constituency work. So it's around, we're there, thank you, we're there to, to work on behalf of the citizens of the region of, on a variety of different things. So what does constituency work entail? If you have a concern or a challenge or an issue with WorkSafe, with the residential tenancy branch, with not being able to move through, with Front Counter BC, with permitting, with, with ICBC, with the Health Authority, with, with BC Hydro, with a variety of different, anything to do with the provincial government. And as a citizen, as a resident, you have an issue with it that you're not able to resolve. Then that's, that's one of the basic things that a constituency officer, an MLA's office does is help work these issues through with, with government. And it's often not about that to, to, some of it's about advocacy for a certain outcome. But oftentimes it's really just getting files moving and saying, let's get a decision on this. This is taking too long. And, but it could be anything with constituency work. Other, the, another chunk of the, the MLA's role is, is advocacy. So, and some of that stuff we talked about earlier in the, in the, in the closed meeting this morning, but for issues for the District of Squamish, but be it for industry or be it for community groups, be it for the region as a whole. Regional transit would be a classic there, but advocacy work on provincial ministries, regional transit. The, another one that's an important one that like I was going to emphasize a little bit later was that Vancouver Coastal Health Strategic Infrastructure Plan for the Sea to Sky. This is something that has been on the, in the books for, since 2019, I think, and has been pushed out and delayed and delayed. And I was just in conversations with VCH last week about that timeline where, where, where is it? When are we going to see deliverables on that? Other healthcare issues, infrastructure issues, BC housing advocacy, you know, the case you guys have, the district has a, has a piece of land that is looking for BC housing participation and is stalled out. So how do we help move that, that type of thing forward? Modi issues, and I think we've got a plethora of Modi issues and, and, and comments. BC parks, Flynn Row, rec sites and trails, forestry, economic development, et cetera, et cetera. So the, those are sort of higher level advocacy pieces, not on a constituent basis, but on a sort of a broader basis. Then another role for MLAs is, is the role around bills. So there's a number of different types of bills. There's private bills and the private members bills. And I've put forward both. So we, one of them, as some of you will recall, on the, on the Quest piece, Quest, the legislation which, which created Quest, I gave them a waiver on taxation for land they owned. Well, they don't own that land anymore. So they were subject to full taxation, full property taxation. And we, with, in coordination with the District of Squamish and the, and the, and Quest, put forward a private, a private bill that, that changed that piece of legislation to allow them to, to get an exemption on leased land. Because it was, it was important for the, for, for the company to be, or the, the university to, for its survival. So, or other pieces where I put forward a piece of private legislation on the, on a transit commission makeup. So in the case of a regional transit authority, the fact that the, right now only elected officials from local government can serve on a transit commission. It was the, one of the next things if, as we go forward and are successful in developing a regional transit service. Our partners also include First Nations and they are currently not eligible to sit on a transit commission. So I put forward a piece of private legislation and working with the, our private members legislation, working with the, the authority or the, the clerk's office to develop that legislation that fit within, in our existing legislation to make an amendment to that. That said, we put forward this legislation and it's only, it's up to government to call it, to debate it. So it's in there, it's introduced, it hasn't gone beyond first reading and I'll, and then it dies with each session. So I'll be reintroducing that in, in February or March. And, and I will also put forward a one on Crown Land leases and because right now Crown Land residential leases can, the, the rates are a function of the assessed values and assessed values have gone up. So the, the province is charging rent on residential land, just, just outside the District of Squamish, Paradise Valley in particular, but Squamish Valley and in other places around the province. The province has created a situation where they're seeing rent increases in the 50, 75, 100, 150% range, which is illegal for any other landlord in the province. And the province doesn't seem to understand that they, well, what might, what the legislation I put forward was that they be, the province is subject to the same maximum rent increases they impose on all other landlords, which is basically, well, was CPI, but now it's less than CPI. So again, trying to provide solutions that are reasonable and that serve the, the community overall. But that, so those are some of the private bills, but then there's also the role of an MLA in managing or in participating in provincial legislation. The, the way it works is similar to the, to municipal legislation, you've got introduction or first reading, which is really just here it is. That's it. Nothing, there's no debate on it. Second reading is, is debate. So you'll have speakers on both sides speaking to the, the benefits or the, the problems, the challenges, either support it, we don't support it, however it happens to play out depending on what that piece of legislation is. And then third reading is our committee stage and that's where, that's where the meat is. That's where when, what we talked about earlier, we have a bill like the Health Professions Bill with, with 406, 646 clauses. And what we will do is go through each one of the, each clause of that bill and explore it. And now some of them you really, you bypass, some of them, you know, if you're adding a comma, you're, it really is, it doesn't really change things particularly, but some of them need an understanding of what are the implications of this or suggestion in terms of changes. So you go through on a clause by clause basis and that is normally handled by the critic of that particular ministry and/or a critic and a critic's team. And yeah, and so that, that, and then it's been the fourth, there's really a fourth reading, it's, it's royal ascent. So that's where usually towards the end of a session, sometimes partway through a session, the lieutenant governor and the lieutenant governor will come in and I doth, the left, what do they say? The lieutenant governor doth ascend. So the lieutenant governor doesn't actually say anything. She comes in, sits in the chair and the clerk says, on bill this, 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 the lieutenant governor doth ascend and the lieutenant governor, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's the formality of the thing. So, and then I mentioned the critic role. So in my case, I am the critic for, for BC fairies and sort of fish. It's actually technically aquaculture, but it's, it's more broad than that. So that includes, in my case, the, the Wild Salmon Initiative, the, the water strategy. There's a water strategy that's being developed for the province. And then generally speaking, with critics, they're looking at, at tracking provincial initiatives, being involved in, in discussions around or participating as much as possible in, in issues or provincial initiatives that are within the critic's role and caught being available for comment, having positions and also informing your caucus colleagues in terms of what the issues are. So if a bill comes forward, for example, a BC fairies bill comes forward, then it would be my responsibility to understand the issues in that bill. What, what are the implications? Inform my colleagues. Then we, as a, as a opposition caucus would develop a position of support or not support or considerations of amendments or whatever it happens to be. And the critic tends, is responsible for leading that. Work, we work with critics and MLAs generally speaking, work with all of, with, with their caucus colleagues and across the board, across the aisle in terms of committee work around developing collective knowledge, around developing positions and, and direction for government and suggestion. And then the last piece, although there's more than this, but the last real significant piece is the budget process. So the budget will be introduced towards the end of February this year. And then in conjunction or in, at the same time as the leg, as legislation is moving through the House. And we're led to understand there's going to be some significant, a significant amount of legislation which will be introduced this year. Although we're not privy to what that is, nobody actually outside of Cabinet and priorities and planning would be familiar and the premier's office would really know what the situation, what, what's going to be proposed because there could be some conflicts created. But the estimates process is actually a very interesting process and it's valuable to all of us. And we can talk about this at another time, but how we can use the estimates process to better understand government's position or advocate for certain things. So budget, each ministry has a budget, it's all published, it is broken down, not down to the pencil level, but it's broken down in, in big chunks. And we can look at historical spending, current spending, proposed spending over the net, the fiscal plan, which is the next three years. And that is, that gives us an opportunity to talk about, about policy, to talk about actual dollars, but also to talk about direction. And so when Modi comes up, for example, we have an opportunity. Now Modi is obviously something that just about every MLA and the whole legislature wants to talk about issues with Modi because it affects pretty much everybody, but we'll try and carve out some time to talk about, about Modi priorities in terms of transportation. We'll, we'll try and talk about the government's position, the minister's thoughts on the development of regional transit for the Sea to Sky, which is a Modi and a BC Transit responsibility to talk about the, about the, the North Yards and the future of the North Yards and what government is intending to do with it. And it's a, it's a great opportunity where we have the, the critic as well, and, and MLAs that are affected depending on what the, the issue is. And then the minister and depending on the ministry, there may be dozens. In the Health Ministry, there is literally dozens of staff in support. So the minister obviously can't be the repository of all information. The, the minister needs their support staff and they, gives us an opportunity to really dig down on issues and get, try and get specific answers. There's obviously some real, there's some challenges there in terms of really getting clear and straight answers. And sometimes they're, the decisions haven't been made, but sometimes they don't want to share them either. So it's a bit of a game, but it, it, it's, it goes on for several months because there's all the ministries to go through. And at the end of the day, they're all, they go through the estimates process, each ministry does. And then it, then that, that is the actual process for approving the budget overall. Once all those, those estimates process have been done, but they're, for our purposes, whether it be Ministry of Forests now, whether it be Energy Mines and whatever the name of it, it's not Petroleum Resource anymore. It's whatever, I can't remember the name of the ministry, they just changed it, but, or the Ministry of Health or the Ministry of Education, all of these things, you know, what I need to, what's very helpful to me is to understand the issues that your, your council, your community, our communities are concerned about and looking for answers on. And that is the best way of getting answers from the, the minister and the, all the staff that really know the answers. So it's a great process and it, it takes place over, it can be a frustrating process too, but it takes place from, from probably starting in mid-March and it'll run right through to the end of the spring session. It's usually one of the last things that's finished. So keep it in mind, if you, if you think of things that you want to know and answer to that you're not getting or then, and then certainly regional transit will be another one of those things. I'm not saying we're going to get an answer, but it'll be interesting to see what happens with the budget coming up in February because that will, if, if there's no money in the budget for transit, if there's no real bump in transit money, then we're another year away. Anyway, there's, sorry, that was a bit of a, it went on, but that's.
We appreciate how it went on, very helpful and a great starting point. And I know council has many questions for you, so I'm just going to jump right into it with councillor Peddingill. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. And this question probably has a very long answer, but I'm wondering if there's also a shorter answer. And you know, you, you ran as an MLA with a party, but my understanding is that a constituency office is meant to be very nonpartisan. So regardless of your party affiliate, affiliation, you get representation and attention. When you're in the legislature, you're still representing the community, but you are somewhat constrained by your party's policy and have some, I guess, obligation to push that, the party's policy forward. And I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit more towards where your role is partisan versus nonpartisan or what people can expect.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a delicate balance. I think there's, there's parallels here in a municipal setting. We were, we operate as a team and you know, you can be an outlier, you can be the rebel on the team or you can be part of the team. I think you find that in the provincial sphere, there, there are issues that are more holistic, that don't necessarily aren't, aren't local issues. I think on a local basis, on a local issue, it, to me, it really doesn't matter. We're going to move forward with what I think is the best approach for the community. You know, an example might be, you know, things like, well, I don't want to highlight disparities, but regional transit, for example, to push regional transit is something that I'm going to do regardless, because I think it's the right thing to do. It's something that we, we need to have happen. And it still really doesn't matter what other, you know, where that sits otherwise. I think, I think generally speaking, we all are there for the right reason, be it at a political, at a provincial level or, or a municipal level. We may have some disagreements or maybe nuances, but at the end of the day, we're all there to look for the best interest of the province and the best interest of the people in the province. And I honestly haven't found myself in a place where I, where the, where I've been uncomfortable or conflicted by a position that I've had to participate in. I'm, I feel that I'm generally aligned with, with the, with the, the direction that we want to go. I mean, we're not, nobody's 100% on, on everything, right? And, but I don't find that I have, I haven't found that the party politics have interfered with where I, where regionally or locally, I think we need to, we need to, to go.
No follow-up. Councillor Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for being here and for the introduction on MLAs and what they do. I think it's really helpful. Always good to have a reminder. You mentioned in your comments about having a, a meeting with VCH last week and that was one of the points that I wanted to ask you about, if you had any insights on updates of timeline of that master planning process. As you said, it's something that we've been anticipating for multiple years now. And so I wonder if you can speak any further to that.
I understand that there is to be a, the, the reissuance of a, of an agreement or engaging a consultant to advance, to begin to advance. It, I didn't get a very solid, clear answer, but they know we continue, I continue to push, I think, as we all do. I'm hopeful that we'll see some, some results by the fall. But I think we should all collectively continue to push that and try and get clearer answers.
Yeah. And it's great to know that you're pushing on that as well. It's definitely a priority for this community as well as at the Sea to Sky Regional Hospital District Board. It's something that we prioritized as well. So I think it's good to know that we're all pushing as hard as we can and hopefully VCH responds to that. Also appreciate your comments on regional transit. I won't belabor that one, but I think there's lots of work to do there. The other one that I just wanted to highlight for you, especially going into kind of budgeting time, the BC childcare new fund spaces, we were successful in Squamish as well as Pemberton to receive some of that funding last year. It took a little bit of advocating on our behalf to increase the amount, the threshold that they were providing in dollar per spaces. I think you were familiar with some of that advocacy work. As you can imagine, the rate of inflation and rising construction costs have further exacerbated, exacerbated that work. So I think we anticipate probably needing to do some more advocacy as the first round of our budget is coming in above what we had originally anticipated, just on the, the risk of those costs escalation. So that's another piece that we're really seeing. We know that childcare is such a significant issue in our community and more broadly through the corridor. We are really hoping to get those spaces open and we still are this year, but the rising cost of construction is really hampering that effort.
And, and just so going forward, I'd be interested in who I can talk to so we can regularly sort of update that. Because my recollection, we were, what, $48,000 a space or something like that, which didn't work for, for any of the communities in the corridor. Then Whistler, or sorry, Squamish and Pemberton were successful in bumping it up to about 55 or something like that, or is it closer to 60? 55 or so? Anyway, those are numbers that I think I'd like to keep current on so that when we find out what at the end of the day does, what it does come in at, then we'll need to continue to bump that and say, here's a realistic, we can't, there's no spaces to convert. It's all new builds and flood construction levels and all the other costs associated with developing here. Yeah.
Councillor, anybody else? We still have a few more minutes. Mayor Herbert.
Thank you. The, just to finish that, that point, one step further is that the cost of delay, you know, we've worked for years to get to the point where we have some budget now and every, every delay just adds, adds another layer. And it's, it's painful when we could have preempted this from the onset and recognizing the, the need for additional funds for areas that have hazards and, and the Sea to Sky Corridor, probably the entirety of your, of your, of your area has, has had. So I think it's, it's an issue that has that knock on effect across more broadly than just, than just us, but we're so close to one and it's, it's been quite frustrating to see it just remain out of reach. I was curious about the highway 99 intersections, sort of just, just broadly. We, we've saw what I'm still going to call as an attempt to address the issue at, at Cleveland 99, which when, I mean, following that project closely, even before shovels were in the ground that, oh, it's going to happen, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And now we're really still in the, it's going to happen phase. And it's been actually, I think, worse than better so far. So I'm hoping that there's going to be a resolution there. We won't, that's maybe too granular for our discussion here today, but in the broader sense around when that improvement's done, we, there is a long list of essentially every intersection needing a, an improvement. And how do you think it's best for us to, to advance those, those discussions with, with the province or, or impact that? Rather than waiting for ICBC data to rack up, which does mean people at, at risk of our, our public safety.
Yeah, good, good question. I think certainly prioritizing them and I understand, you know, the, the Cleveland 99 thing, I was working with Patty on that. So this is how, how slow things go sometimes, unfortunately. But MOMCOM or the Forest Service Road by the, by site B there, that, that's obviously a dangerous piece. Although is it the number one piece? I would argue probably Alice Lake is in my mind. Someone who drives that all the time, you just see what potential it has. And I've been working with MOTI for the last two years or sort of come up with alternatives. I like the, personally, the, the protected left turn. So you know, we have a number of these on the Sea to Sky. Porto would be one. So you can turn into that, that flow of traffic without being in conflict. They, they have a problem with it on a four-way, but I'm saying, okay, well, let's go around to Depot Road. Then if you want it, if you're, if to turn left, you're going to have to go back down to Depot and turn left at the light. Anyway, there's a variety of different solutions. I'm not the traffic engineer, but I'm continuing to push them and push them and push them to come up with a solution for that one. Dowd seems a harder one to manage in the long run, another light there or something. And, and how the, the muni participates, how the developers participate in that particular piece of, obviously MOMCOM is a provincial responsibility as far as I can see. And then a double left out of, again, MOMCOM, but by the, by Highlands, there, the mall, I think would, is a, certainly we've seen that over the course of the last six or eight months, right? As, as work has taken place. So that one is another piece, but to, to prioritize them, work, I think with, at a staff level with the, the MOTI staff that are, like Michael Braun and those guys, I think can, can help us get a sense of, of, of where they're seeing the priorities. And then we got to step it up a little bit and push it to make sure that it gets, it gets done sooner rather than later.
Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll can, we'll continue that, that work, just hoping to shorten up those timelines from, yeah, even, even when the project gets, gets kicked off that we're, you know, a year, a year into a 100 meter project is.
Yeah, I know.
I might be exaggerating slightly, but I don't think by much.
Started the.
11, 11 months, 11 months. The, and, and just to further on that, on that list, I think is some sort of interaction with the, with the lights in Britannia to, to help the, the backup we have through our community on, particularly on a, evident on a Sunday, on a Sunday afternoon, trying to go, trying to go south and just get from downtown to, to Valley Cliff when the cause of that congestion is, I mean, in the broader sense, provincial tourism, but the light at, at Britannia backing all the way, all the way back up and, and sometimes all the way through the community.
The, yeah, that, that's a, that's a tough one. There's been a, they, they've worked on signaling, timing quite a bit. There's been some suggestion about roundabouts and that sort of thing, which at the end of the day, doesn't really, isn't really going to change anything. The biggest issue is I think there's 50, 52 kilometers of essentially two lanes in each direction, narrowing down to one lane. That, that's, that's the source of the problem. So we have a certain capacity that's limited by one lane in either direction. And the issue for us is we're going to have to, we have to maintain or manage that capacity as best we can. And, and the lowest, the, the low hanging fruit is regional transit. Like that's, that's the first, because the chances of us double, like four laning from essentially Porto to Horseshoe Bay, there's another billion dollar project at current prices, I would imagine, and, and it's not going to happen anytime soon. So. I don't have an easy answer for that one.
Did I see a hand over here? Okay. Yeah, I, I saw you. I'll come to you momentarily, Counselor Stone, first Counselor Greenlaw.
Thanks. Through the chair. Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that. The, I can't stress enough how important the regional transit is, right? And I've heard, I mean, I'm new at this obviously, but I've heard that it's just been delayed for years already. And reducing emissions is a global priority, let alone a local one. But in addition to that, I would argue that our OCP is reliant upon the regional transit and our parking direction too is not complicit. It, it does not allow for people to have commuter vehicles. We, we really need a regional transit connector. And I, yeah, anyway, so I'd really like to emphasize that you push for that because it is incredibly important on a number of levels, especially for the experience of people within Squamish who have difficulty accessing resources in Vancouver and to the north. And I'd also like one other thing, you know, something that was brought to mind in the past couple of weeks with the flooding that happened downtown is the second access to downtown, which I also believe lies with the province, you know, effectively. But with global warming and sea level rise, that is becoming an increasing risk having flooding downtown. And we need to have ways of evacuating our people from downtown. So thanks.
Okay. More of a statement than a question. Counselor, MLA Sturdy, you want to follow up?
Yes. In terms of the, the regional transit, know that, that I, this has been something that I've been an advocate for, for ever since I was the mayor of Pemberton. So we need a regional transit service. There's no question about it. I had the, we, we were able to get BC Transit to develop a 25 year transit futures plan in, I think it was published in 2017, maybe it's 2016. And we, that really lays out what the future could look like for transit in the Sea to Sky. And it stages it and it gives it some costing, obviously out of date, but it gives us a map forward. And unfortunately, since 2017, since that plan was developed and published and adopted by all of us, including the, the nations, our, our part, our First Nations partners, we haven't been able to advance it. Now then COVID came into place. I, I did have a question. Do you have a, a, do we have the, the demand study results? I asked my, yeah, I asked my staff to see if we could follow up with MOTI to see where that demand study is, because that's a, we're a year into it here. We should have those results. I'm a little skeptical as to the, the value of those results, only because the whole thing was done during COVID and it wasn't really, I'm not sure that the numbers are valid. But whatever, I'd love to see what, what those results are. So that's something I'll be following up on over the next, of course, the next couple of weeks to see whether we can get that. The, because MOTI did a demands, another demand study to see whether we needed those, that, that, that service still. Anyway, I'm sorry, what was the, the other, your second?
Second entrance downtown.
I'm not sure. I, I know that the province sees it as useful as a municipal access. I'm not sure what commitment is there on behalf of the province to contribute to that solution. So I'd be interested in talking to staff or whoever about where, what, where that discussion lies and how the Muni sees it as a, as a provincial priority or as a provincial and as a, what provincial participation is expected. That'll help me to advocate.
Counselor Stoner, a quick one from me before I come around to you for number two. Concise and quick MLA Sturdy, Mayor Mark Sager in West Vancouver floated the idea during the fall election of extending the Blue Bus Service to Squamish. An idea worth pursuing or not? What, brief thoughts?
I, I would prefer to see a regional solution. And I'm not, I, I'm agnostic as to whether it'd be BC Transit or an extension. I'd be certainly willing to talk about an extension to TransLink's services. But I, I, and I can see the, the, the value for the, for the district of Squamish. But as MLA for West Vancouver Sea to Sky, I really want to see a connection for Mount Curry to come to their hospital services in there and the retail services in Squamish and connection with the, with, with, with Metro Vancouver. So I, I want to see a regional solution.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Tied to this, I'm just curious if you have any thoughts about updating a study on the highway capacity, especially with growth south of Squamish. So we just, the regional district approved third reading of Furry Creek. Britannia Beach is at first reading, that's thousands of new units. I wonder if there's any benefit to pushing for the province to update the carrying capacity assessment of the highway to advance our shared perspective on regional transit.
Yeah. Go the wrong way. Interesting. Yes, I think the good data, current data is valuable. I think we can, we have fairly good monitoring on the highway right now. All of the, the infrastructure is in there to pretty much count traffic. So we have good segment data. It's a matter of, of just coming up with it and see what it looks like. And I, I believe as of last summer, we were all, not quite, but almost at 2019 levels. Now, when it comes to, as you know, as a representative Counselor Stoner on the regional board, you understand that, that Furry Creek was part of, was incorporated into the, the highway capacity issues back in what, in the early nineties, I guess it was. So, and that was before the highway upgrade. I do, and I, and I'm not dismissing the, the congestion issues that we face. Please don't get me wrong. Let's remember though, that when we put it into the larger context, understand that we have issues on, on, on Friday nights in certain places, on Sunday afternoons in certain places. And then let's, let's recognize the issues on, on the second narrows that happen two times a day, every day. South of the Fraser, some of the issues there. So, and then what are we trying, you know, understanding the data, I think where the best argument is that we saw 22% growth in this community in, in the last census. 18%, I believe in Whistler and 34% in Pemberton. So the fact that this corridor is an attractive place and growing, there's no dispute there. So there's two issues as I see it. One, one being that we need to maintain as best we can the capacity that we have. And as, you know, we keep reiterating, regional transit's a low hanging fruit there. But the other pieces of piece that I see, the district continues to, to support and emphasize. And I have always felt the same way that if we as community leaders don't focus on making sure that we have well paying jobs in this community and simply see growth that forces people to commute to another community to work, then we will have failed. And which is why places like the, the North Yards, the, any other potential, the commercial job employment lands, that we spend as much time focusing on how to, how to encourage good jobs as we do on affordable housing. I think they go, they go hand in hand.
MLA Sturdy, we've gone a little over the time that, but I think it was well worth it. Thank you very much for joining us. And do you have some closing thoughts for us?
Just a, a, a couple of pieces that I wanted to say also remain some of the priority work that I'll be seeing in the spring. One of them is Howson Secondary and the, the middle school, the seismic upgrade in the middle school piece. I think, you know, that to serve this community over the, we got, these are five year projects. So we need to start this project as soon as possible in order to really, because it's going to be five years before we really see any impact. So we're given, and, and there's no reason to think that we're not going to continue to see growth in this community. And, and the demographic is such that, that, that those kids are going to be in middle school by the time it's built. So we, we, that, that's one of my priorities with, with then the education side. And then just a oh, the other one that I think is, as a critical infrastructure piece that seems to have fallen off the table a little bit is as we know, the Hydro Sub, substation is right over here. And it is in, on land that is questionable. If we have a seismic event, we could certainly see some significant issues. We could have an inundation event. There, there is a, I, I think there was, it was a priority of hydro in the past to look at relocating that substation to a, a, a better place, to a place that had better ground quality that was perhaps central to growth. There's a number of, of areas that were identified and that's something that I think we need to collectively continue to push. That seems to have fallen off the table a little bit. They're going to make one, there, I think there's some of those transformers need to be replaced. There could be some significant work that takes place there, which may or may not be necessary in the short term. But at the end of the day, we could spend a lot of money upgrading something that's not in the right place, place anyway. And I, I think that there's a, there's a conversation that needs to happen there. And we can need to continue to push it just for this, because if we have that thing go down and we have the community out of, out of power, that, that's a, that's one of those public safety issues that needs to be managed. The visitor capacity here, I thought that there was some really interesting data there that I can't remember what the number was now. It was, how many visits? Five, 450,000 camping visits to, to Squamish? On, on how many sites? A couple hundred sites? You know, we, we need some action there. We had a long-term plan, probably five, six, seven years ago now, to develop another couple of hundred, three, four, 500 even rec sites in, in the valley. And I think it's important that we, we, we manage, the demand is here. The demand is going to continue to grow and we can either have people camping all over the place or we can concentrate impacts. And I, I'm a big fan of concentrating those impacts. And so it's important that we get additional, we, we get action on from rec sites and trails on putting more campsites in place. And then just as a general comment, we see right now that there's a $5 billion surplus in a, a annual surplus. And as a result of a variety of things, additional money coming from the feds, some big contingencies that were already built into the budget that weren't spent. It gives the government a, you know, the, the, people say, oh, they got to spend it, they got to spend it or they got to pay down debt. Like that's a bad thing. I, which I don't entirely understand. Yes, it's so, so there is a year end money piece. And that money would have to be spent before the end of this fiscal, which is March 31st. So I think over the course of the next couple of months, we're going to see a largess from the government, just spending money all over the place. Well, I, I mean, the people, the media say, you got to spend that $5 billion. Now, I'd also argue to remember that when this government took, took office, the provincial budget, the provincial debt, I'm sorry, was about $65 billion. By the end of this fiscal plan, the provincial debt will be $128 billion. So we've doubled the provincial debt over the course of the last five or six years. To say that we shouldn't, that we should spend $5 billion rather than pay down debt. I, I'm not entirely convinced that we shouldn't pay down some of that debt. That said, you can see the political desire to spend money. You know, I got all this money. It's burning a hole in my wallet. I got to spend it. So if they're going to spend it anyway, let's advocate. What do we, you know, what can we spend money on that will benefit the community, that'll benefit the region? And that will, that will provide services to people, but it also has to be quick. So if you have any ideas about and, and government can't go spend it all in government writings. They have to spend it everywhere. So let's, if you have any ideas on quick spends, quick wins, to use that unfortunate term. You know, let, let's, let's think about that. And government, there's going to be, we'll see what legislation, I'll talk to you about, I'd like to come back and talk to you maybe in, in April about what the budget looked like, what the budget priorities are and, and budget estimates as well. Also, one other piece, and sorry, Counselor French. As you know, you, the spec tax is coming to Squamish. Remember that the legislation is that the money collected in the spec tax is to be spent on affordable housing. And spent on affordable housing in the regional district in which it's collected, which is certainly an irritant to certain communities, like in West Vancouver. They, they generated about 40% of the spec tax collected in metro. And has that money been spent back in West Vancouver? No, it's been spent in other places, but we need to pay attention to that calculation. And if the, if only the district of Squamish is subject to the spec tax, then it strikes me that the district of Squamish is where the money should be spent. So let's follow that and make sure that we have accountability on it. Oh, sorry, too much.
You're killing me.
Fuel pricing, fuel pricing. I think we all know that that's an issue. That's an irritant. I have been, I've had lots of correspondence with Minister Ralston in the past, who was the minister. I have, I have provided him with data. They, we, we were successful in getting Squamish as one of the exact, one of the, the communities that was studied by the BC Utilities Commission under the, the Field Price Transparency Act. So they have good data on Squamish. I've continued to provide the minister with data just the other day that, you know, we were talking about, we're at a $1.77 or a dollar, whatever it was. And met in West Vancouver, North Vancouver is 15 cents less. And they, they don't, they're not, we're not subject to the, the TransLink levy. So we, we're pretty, my calculation is we're extracting about $14 million a year out of the region in excess fuel prices. And so now we have a new minister. So that's Josie Osborne, and I will be working, I'll be working to convince her to provide a submission to the Competition Bureau in Ottawa that we are being unfairly treated here. And I, I know that there's been some constituents here in, in the region, specifically out of Squamish. One guy who actually did provide a, I did make a submission to the Competition Bureau and they said, well, it's all about competition. And you don't have enough competition essentially. But I, I don't, I don't, I don't, and that, I don't accept that. And I believe that the province through BCUC has more than enough information and data and access to data and capacity to make a provincial submission to the Competition Bureau, which is going to go farther, I believe, than, than if I make the submission or if a private citizen makes a submission. I'd like the, the weight of the province behind it. So that'll be another one of the things I'd hope to accomplish this year.
Fabulous. That was all valuable. Thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing you again in April, April. Hopefully we can coordinate that and make it happen.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And with that, I will recess us for, to five, Counselor Stoner. To five minutes to 11, so that our staff has a bit of time to prepare the next presentation. Thank you. And I welcome everybody back to our committee of the whole meeting for this morning. For those maybe that are just joining us online or here in the gallery, my name is Counselor John French. And I am the acting mayor for the month of January. So in that capacity, I'm chairing today's committee of the whole meeting. And we are now on to community planning and sustainability issues. And our next topic is the Gerbaldy Estates Neighborhood Plan. And at this point, I will be turning it over to Mr. Gunn, I believe, to take it from here.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Matt Gunn. I'm a community planner with the district of Squamish. With me are Jonas Valen Niskus, the director of the department, and Gary Buxton, the GM of the division, the GM of the division. Okay. So I'm here today presenting the Gerbaldy Estates Neighborhood Plan Stage Three Update. Rather than seeking direction from council on this planning process, the primary intent today is to update you on the background details, in particular for new members of council. And to provide, provide an overview of the next step in advance of stage three engagement activities which are coming up. I have a, is this, yeah, there we go. I'd like to begin with a quick review of where we are in the planning process. Stage one was a project initiation phase, which began in mid 2021 and included council endorsement of engagement plan in June of that year. Stage two focused on engaging with the public to understand the neighborhood and community context. Stage three, which we're now in, is a stage in which future neighborhood scenarios are created and presented to the community for consideration. In stage four, a preferred neighborhood plan will be developed for consideration by the community and council. And in stage five, the finalized preferred plan will be presented to council for adoption. And in stage five, the finalized preferred plan will be presented to council for adoption as a bylaw. I now like to review some of the results from previous, previous engagement activities that have led to this point. As noted, stage two was the start of public engagement for the planning process. Given the COVID context, we utilized our new online platform, Let's Talk Squamish, as the primary hub for engagement activities. There was significant uptake on the platform. We had over 600 respondents to a survey on housing. We had a mapping activity where 277 items were contributed. There was a heavily used question and answer forum with just over a hundred questions, or just under a hundred questions. There was a vision and ideas activity with sixty comments. In addition, we held an, we held in-person open houses with 131 attendees and a virtual open house with 68 attendees. Staff also participated in a food policy workshop, which was organized by Squamish Climate Action Network. Several key themes were identified in stage two of the planning process, which were included in an engagement summary presented to council. These key themes included the following. The Geribaldi Estates neighbourhood is a great place to live. The Geribaldi Estates neighbourhood planning process upset many neighbourhood residents. Many neighbourhood residents have negative perceptions of infill and development and want their neighbourhood to be left as it currently is. There's room for improvement in infrastructure and in particular, transportation infrastructure in the neighbourhood. Many key values need to be considered in developing the neighbourhood plan. And there is room, there is some limited support for specific missing middle housing forms within the neighbourhood. At the conclusion of stage two, the engagement plan was modified to include a series of small group conversations at the, at the outset of stage three. The intention of these conversations was to provide residents who were frustrated about the stage two engagement process a chance to talk directly with staff and council. That was something that we hadn't provided and came up as, as a, a negative and something that was desired. And the other intention was to ensure that a diverse range of Squamish residents and stakeholders were represented in the planning process and those voices were heard. Staff developed a discussion guide and background information for these conversations and conversations, and reached out to a range of stakeholders, which included residents, representatives of critical services, housing advocates, and non-market housing tenants, businesses, seniors, and youth. These efforts resulted in a total of twenty small group conversations with 160 attendees. And at these meetings, staff facilitated conversations and recorded themes, which were then presented back to attendees for review. Themes and discussion records from these meetings were included in the Stage Three Small Group Conversations Engagement Summary. An important consideration here is to note that the findings from the small group conversations in stage three were not quantitative, nor were they assumed to be statistically representative of the community. As noted, the intention was to ensure that we had a range of perspectives from residents and stakeholders represented in the planning process. The following are some of the key themes from these discussions. Housing affordability and limited housing supply in Squamish is causing significant challenges for businesses and critical services to attract and retain employees. Finding opportunities for additional non-market housing opportunities in the community was highlighted as important by advocates and tenants. Some community residents, including youth and seniors, have concerns regarding the impact growth and infill will have on the character of their neighbourhood. Some community residents expressed strong opposition to infill, large apartments, lock consolidation, and parking reductions, and did not feel infill would support affordability. Some community residents expressed support for more diverse and affordable housing supply and the opportunities that it could accompany expanded housing options. And finally, youth and seniors highlighted the importance of transit. Another step that was completed in the first part of stage three was a Geribaldi Estates Transportation Study. The study considers potential future traffic volumes in the estates. The scenario that was used is based on both significant infill and greenfield development of future lands such as Quest, Thunderbird, and land outside the growth management boundary. The scenario was assumed to overestimate future growth in the area. Essentially, worst case scenario, if there was lots of development, what would the impact be on the transportation network? The analysis determined impacts on the local road network and Highway 99 intersection from this growth. The analysis indicated that some failing turn, turning movements would occur after 3,500 new residential units across the entire northeast quadrant of Squamish. However, the study also proposed improvements to address these challenges and estimated the cost for those improvements. With the improvements identified, traffic, traffic that would be generated in the proposed scenario can be effectively managed. The study and potential upgrades have been discussed with MOTI. And MOTI recognized these improvements as potential options to address the challenges, should they arrive, but also noted that other upgrades to intersections could provide alternative solutions. In stage three, staff also received a report from the Squamish Food Policy Council with recommendations for the Geribaldi Estates to support the local food network. These included the following. Designating an area in the east of the neighbourhood to support a mix of both housing and agricultural uses. Within half the, within the half acre VLA parcels, encouraging land sharing opportunities where landowners collaborate with growers to bring unused yard space into food production. Along Mamquam Road, use the existing district land for a public corridor with active transportation and community gardens. Within the western area adjacent to the established commercial area, look for opportunities to establish additional walkable commercial area with a regional farmhouse, regional farm hub, commissary kitchen, and market. These examples all focus on land use policies, but other elements in their report focused on establishing a funding mechanism and infrastructure considerations. Following the small group conversations and the engagement report that was presented to council, staff began working on future land use scenarios. For this, the neighbourhood has been divided into six sub-areas. The six sub-areas, which are generally shown in this image, will present, will be presented with defined boundaries in the upcoming engagement activities. For each of these sub-areas, three future scenarios have been developed. These scenarios present options for how the Geribaldi Estates could evolve in coming years. The scenarios outline specific permitted land uses and housing forms, heights, and densities for each of the areas. The proposed land uses that are included were informed by the input received through the planning process. Different future scenarios can be chosen for each of the six sub-areas, which allows participants to provide feedback specific for each of the sub-areas. In total, there'd be a combination of eighteen different scenarios that could be contemplated, which is something we heard during the planning process that residents wanted a range of options, not just three options. And so by having these different mix and match essentially options, people have, have opportunity to look at different scenarios. In advance of the upcoming engagement activities, I'd like to give council a limited preview of the details regarding the scenarios that'll be presented. The intention of this preliminary information is to highlight that the scenarios offer a range of housing forms, heights, and densities. Early in the project, some of the residents and participants expressed concern that the process had a predetermined outcome, such as denser apartments across the neighbourhood. This is not the case. For many sub-area neighbourhoods, proposed height increases are limited in scope. In the staff report, I've included some basic details about the three scenarios, which are titled A, B, and C. In scenario A, across the entire neighbourhood, permitted heights would remain the same as currently permitted. A number of additional land uses are permitted, such as more diverse housing options in residential areas, but the size of the structures would be no taller, nor have a larger floor area ratio than currently permitted. One point of clarification is that for several properties in the estates, existing buildings are not built to the maximum permitted heights. So therefore, in scenario A, some buildings could be built taller than currently exist, but they would meet the existing zoning height restrictions. In scenario B, a one-story height increase is proposed for half of the sub-areas, and a two-story increase is proposed in one sub-area. In scenario C, four sub-areas are proposed for one additional building story. One sub-area is proposed for a two-story increase, and one sub-area is proposed for a three to four-story increase. These scenarios will be presented to the community for consideration and feedback, first through Let's Talk Squamish. And staff is going to provide council with details approximately one week in advance before they're released to the public, so that council members are informed and prepared for any questions they may receive from the public when they are released online. Don't want you guys caught off guard or having to do a crazy search through the scenarios when they're released. To aid the community in understanding proposed land use changes, a visual model has been created to represent building heights and massing in relation to existing building forms. This aligns with direction received from council following presentation of the small group conversations. Now, I do need to clarify that the level of detail that you're going to see in, in the visualizations is much less than you would typically see in artistic rendering that you get for one development project from a developer who's hired, you know, a special team to, to develop those. This is not the level of detail we're going for. But it will provide an opportunity, opportunity to see how building forms will, will relate to neighbourhood properties or neighbouring properties. These images are from the visualization model that's been developed. This, we, we started out by creating a model of what's currently in place. So these are all the existing built forms that you'll see across the, the neighbourhood. And it gives you an example of the type and level of detail. It's essentially to give you a sense of how the buildings are going to relate to each other in terms of form and massing. So that will come, and so there'll be visualizations for all scenarios, or all sub-areas at all three scenario levels. So it's, it's been quite a bit of work to create these, but I think it'll help the community understand what type of scale we're talking about with, with the buildings that are proposed. In addition to the three land use scenarios for each of the six sub-areas, the next stage of public engagement will include consideration of proposed policy options on a range of neighbourhood planning topics under the theme of emerging ideas. Participants will have the opportunity to provide feedback on early policy concepts related to the following topic, topics. Accessory commercial units, co-housing, commercial food hubs, or a commercial food hub, Mamquam Community Gardens, mid-block connections, tree retention parks, transportation network, childcare and employment space. The next step of stage three engagement will begin with an online launch through Let's Talk Squamish in the first half of February. Information presented will include the land use scenarios and emerging ideas. In the second half of February, staff will promote and launch a series of small format meetings. Registers will launch, oh, sorry, register, participants will pre-register for these in-person meetings, which will be similar in size and nature to the small group conversations that were used earlier in stage three. At these meetings, residents will have the opportunity to meet directly with staff, learn more about the scenarios, ideas, ask questions, and provide feedback. A survey will be available through Let's Talk Squamish and at the meetings, and the survey and feedback from the meetings will be compiled and presented to council as an engagement summary. Results from stage three will inform the development of a preferred neighbourhood scenario development plan in stage four. The staff recommendation is that council receive the Geribaldi Estates Neighbourhood Plan Update Report for information. And that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Gunn. And just before we get into questions, I want to reiterate that, that this is simply a staff update. And much more meat will come onto these bones in the next couple of weeks as we get further information. So just keep that in mind with your questions this morning, please, council. And councillor Stoner, followed by Mayor Hurford.
Thank you, the other chair, thanks for the update and just a checkpoint on where we're at with this project. Exciting to see the development of the scenarios and appreciate all the work that's probably gone into developing the visualizations. I am curious, you mentioned that it'll be part of the emerging ideas and policy priorities, the employment space and the commercial dwelling, accessory commercial unit. Just wondering if we've incorporated that at all in terms of the scenario planning? So we talk about height and different land uses. Is all the height considered to be residential height, or is some of it potentially commercial height?
Thanks for the question. So the, the scenarios that are presented in the visuals and the information related to those visuals, the six different sub-areas and the three different scenarios for each of those sub-areas, those are independent of some of the policy ideas, but there's crossover. The, because the emerging ideas are somewhat add-ons, which we may or may not decide to accept, the permutations could get really complicated if we start trying to incorporate those. So things like the accessory commercial space would be an addition to what's going to be presented in the visuals. But the, I, I can say that employment space, aside from accessory commercial uses, wait, what did I call accessory commercial units? Aside from those, the commercial space is limited in area where it's going to be proposed within the neighbourhood. And those areas are represented in the visualization. So we have quite a bit of employment space that would be contemplated in some of the scenarios. They're directly represented in those sub-areas in, in the visualizations. But add-ons like the accessory commercial units are not represented because it is, could come or could go regardless of what scenarios are supported.
Next, I have councillor, Mayor Hurford, and I'll follow with councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Am I correct to state that the, currently the neighbourhood isn't sort of hitting the, the maximums of the allowable density and, and that's, that's already, already allowed? Is, is that, that's correct?
Yeah, it's property by property, but for sure, there, there are areas where buildings are not built to the height or density that are permitted on those properties, older buildings on some larger properties. And then certainly many of, many of the residential properties do not come close to the density that currently could be built if someone were to come and say, hey, I'm buying this property, I want to rebuild a larger home. Those could be much larger than are currently in place.
Okay, so just to, I'm just, I'm trying to, and maybe I'm reading, I'm, I'm going, I'm going too far. I just want to understand the, so in some of our areas where it's zoned for, for use, but that hasn't, that hasn't occurred yet. And then we're doing this planning process in where we're going to have a visualization of what a future state would be. But the future state, is it going to be represented as everyone going to the maximum of that's allowable? Which, in my experience, sort of across the whole community, isn't what the end result is. I don't know what it is, if it's eighty percent of that, or if it's fifty percent of that. Or just how have you addressed this general concept as you've been developing it? And is that something that you're, that's sort of been on your radar?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the, you know, the visualization tool that, when you get into site, like specific site planning for a property, there, there becomes a, a level of consideration and detail for the different factors that we just can't delve into at this level. It really is a broad swath approach to try and represent. And so we, we have, there's two parts to your question. One, you know, the, not every property will redevelop over time. We have lots of things, you know, there, there are uses that are permitted across large areas that aren't utilized, even though they might have, you know, provide more dwelling units or whatnot. So we've tried to assume that there's some proportion of development will occur over time. And then on properties, they're actually within our zones, even right now, there are a range of FARs or floor area ratios that are permitted, depending on different permutations of whether you have a, you know, the low carbon, or, or you have a secondary suite or ADU. So there's a number, they're, they're just, this gets super complicated as you try and figure out what to represent. And so we've tried to take a representation that's most of the FAR that could be permitted on most of the properties and represented for most of the scenarios, like fifty percent transition, which may occur over a decade or two, to new property, to, to new land uses. You know, I think it, because there are so many permutations in how this will all turn out, we'll, we'll be able to, we'll explain what we've done in, in the scenarios, and we'll be available to, to answer questions in any of the meetings or the online events, if people have specific questions. But we've tried to take a best guess at what we think it might turn out with, knowing that it's impossible to nail it. It's, it's in the future and it's hard to say how things will turn out. But we've taken a guess at to represent, you know, a fairly large buildout of what could happen. Does that answer your question?
It's, we're going down that path, and I think that's, that's good for now. I, I was curious around the, you know, if, if the representations are going to represent a hundred percent buildout of the new, of the new policy and what the existing policy, we don't see a hundred percent buildout. So then that, that could be more, more jarring. I'm, I'm just concerned, understanding that, that nuance and if perhaps the baseline should be a representation of what a hundred percent buildout of, of current policy looks like to better represent the difference. Or just, or maybe there's another way to address it. I, I, I hope you see the, the concept that I'm sort of wrestling with. And maybe it'll become clear when we see those, and I'm sorry if I'm getting the cart before the horse here.
No, actually, sorry, that is, I, I have a better way that I should have used to respond to this initially. In the scenario A, for all of the sub-areas, the scenario A is, does not propose increase in height or density for the sub-areas. And so the massing that's represented in the scenario A across should reflect close. Again, there's all these different variables that come into it, but it's roughly a representation of what could be built under existing zoning regulations. So that maybe targets, maybe that was a, a better way to answer that. But I do want to say we, we haven't applied a hundred percent in all areas. We've, because that's not a realistic scenario. There are a couple of areas where because of the nature of the land uses that are proposed, we have applied a hundred percent so that the people can see what would be, what would occur over time. But in general, we haven't applied a hundred percent across.
Councillor Anderson, followed by councillor Peddingo.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. In your introduction, you have described the In your introduction, you have described the six sub areas, or rather the, as being a quote "generally shown" in the chart in your report, the Figure 1 Neighborhood Subareas for Scenarios. It appears to me that the six sub areas, as we have them delineated here and as per your remark, generally shown, but they're drawn without consideration of, and I'm going to call it sub-neighborhood lot and building or development history typologies or land use as per our OCP and zoning. For example, we have two clear typologies here in the VLA and in the original PAPGUD, what you've got Estates North, Garibaldi Estates subdivisions. These are clear typologies of a uniform type. And then we have some other things that we could do that. So my question is, and since after all, as you've also highlighted, our sub-neighborhood values have been clearly emphasized by the existing residents. So could you comment on the chart we have before us and the rationale or status of the delineation of the six sub areas?
Yeah, for sure. I think the thing I want to say first about this question, is that, you know, this is, at this stage, we've heard a bunch of input. We've tried to put together some ideas to talk about. But, you know, the six areas that are in this, if in the discussion with the residents, they say, holy crow, this is a crazy, this boundary was in the wrong place and this should be in that, like, we're not bound to anything at this point. There's lots of opportunity to hear what people say. If people say that street, you totally should put that over there and the land uses that are over here, we can do this with and that. There's, we're not on a fixed path. We can course correct, and if that comes up, I'm more than happy to do that. Easily it could occur. It was, the intent here was more to, one of the things I heard a lot of is people felt that there were differences across the neighborhood. And I didn't want to be bound here to what might happen over there. I wanted to give the opportunity for people to look at their closer to home areas. And there were also responses from people that said, hey, you know, I support something like this in this area, but I sure don't support it in this area. And so in the conversation as we go forward, we want to enable that. If we just had one scenario, three different scenarios that were across the whole area, there'd be no opportunity to talk about people's individual areas and their feelings that might be different across the neighborhood. So I tried to respond to that. In terms of how the neighborhoods were split up, there, I think there were probably two primary functions. One was the type of land and the characteristics of the land in place right now, the lots and the uses that existed. And then two, what I had heard from people in the process, where I'd heard like, hey, you know, I could see this happening over here generally, but I wouldn't support it over here. So I wanted to create boundaries that I felt could both reflect how the land is different across the neighborhood now and what I had heard. And there was a bit of a balancing act between those two elements. And I will say that in some of the sub areas, the sub area does not need to be treated uniformly. There is a sub area where, hey, if properties are above this, you know, size, it could be treated in this way, and below this size, it could be treated in another way. So there are even some nuances within the sub areas in the scenarios. But as I said, you know, this is a starting point for a conversation. This is the first time we're going to be looking at like, hey, here's some land uses that might be supported in this area over time. Totally open to the feedback that may come. And if some of the feedback is that these boundaries are unreasonable or don't work, we can change them for our preferred neighborhood plan. It's just a format for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. I had a follow-up question regarding the policy considerations section of your report to council. You outline in a number of 10 bullet points here, proposed policy options and a range of neighborhood planning topics. And there's about 10 topics listed. There's a couple that occurred to me and that I didn't see highlighted here. And I'll start with something that relates to a report we may have discussed later on today. And that is an embodied carbon guide that our staff have been working on with Whistler. And this has a number of recommendations for neighborhood planning, community planning generally. In this neighborhood, as it might evolve, the outcome of this plan, we're going to see, as already proposed, height increases, replacement of buildings, retrofits, renovations and new build. And all of these relate to the potential policy area of how we want to encourage embodied carbon considerations and other kinds of design considerations. I'll just leave off with here with a reference to the Loggers Lane East Neighborhood Plan where we set a precedent. We have an item here, we propose to maximize wood-based building materials or other carbon storing materials. I don't see this topic in your list of the 10 policy planning topics. Might this be considered interpreting or implementing some of the recommendations coming forward on embodied carbon and our building stock?
So the policies that are for consideration in this stage have been selected based on what has been heard through the planning process to date, that kind of some of the themes that have come up as concerns that have questions I'd like to get answered now to help develop the preferred neighborhood plan. Embodied carbon didn't raise in that collection of ideas. Doesn't mean it's not something we can consider. As I said, we've, you know, we're still in the, in a stage where we're looking at scenarios. We're not developing the preferred neighborhood plan. I can certainly pursue that further, and that's something we can incorporate and consider as we move forward. So I don't see it as something that is lost, or I haven't put it in at this point. But it's, you know, certainly if, when we bring the engagement summary to council and there's a direction there, certainly can respond to that. I don't think it's a lost opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. And Chair, just briefly, I wonder if I might add to my list of policy topics, neighborhood hubs. We have discussed it in the past in connection with setting out the strategy for this neighborhood planning exercise. Could you comment on how they might be treated in this neighborhood plan?
Now, when you say neighborhood hub, two things come to mind. One, our OCP has a bunch of language, policy language around neighborhood nodes, which is intended to be a location that has some day-to-day services, a bit higher density, supports transit. And then a neighborhood hub, I often think of as an emergency response or services opportunity that can be utilized. Which are we talking about?
Professor, could clarify, Mr. Gunn, because it came up at a cultural facilities planning meeting last week. Cultural and recreational activity hubs. For example, either or both of those, or seniors, social connections places. And for example, the upper floor, the fire hall scenario or the churches existing in the neighborhood and how they might be used in future.
Yeah, I think we have some, some of the content that might be relevant to that would fall under the, there's Parks and Place Making component where we've got, I think culture is where we've slotted some of that content in. The more neighborhood node concept, if any of that element is relevant, I think inherently gets tied into this neighborhood because we have such a large commercial area. And so expanding or creating more opportunities for non-residential space, I think would highlight the, or support some of those opportunities. But something to contemplate, and I can certainly look into it more.
I have councillor Penningill next, and I believe councillor Greenlaw. And I'll put myself on the list. Go ahead, councillor Penningill.
Thank you, and I really appreciate getting the update and sort of, you know, having that refresh on where we are and what's happening next. And really looking forward to seeing some of the sort of more concrete visualizations of some of what we think we've heard. Two things, you mentioned the small group meetings. I really found a lot of value in being able to sit and listen as a councillor in the small group meetings. And I'm wondering if the thought going forward is if we will schedule councillors to attend or if there will be a good mechanism for us as council to attend. Is that the process we're thinking of repeating for the, going for the small meetings? Are we thinking about something a little bit different?
Our initial thought was to go with staff, but I found having council incorporated into those meetings very valuable. And if that is something council is interested in doing, I would be more than open and happy to have involvement from council in those. We don't typically pull council in on our engagement activities. It's often an invite that's open. That was a particular, a particular program where that the council presence was requested and seemed appropriate. But if this council is interested in being a part of those, I would be very happy to have council attend those meetings.
Okay, thanks. That's maybe something to think about. Again, I did find it valuable to listen to the conversation. It was very enlightening. Now, one other piece, and you know, I know that in general, staff don't get involved in election. But as we were talking about various engagements that fed into this, we recently had an election. This topic was part of many platforms, part of a lot of discussion. And arguably, you know, the election outcomes maybe were somewhat informative. I'm just wondering if any of, if staff were looking at any of that discussion, those outcomes and layering in some of that to what's coming forward? Or is that really, that piece is really on councillors to kind of layer that in on top of what we've seen in this stuff?
Yeah, thanks for that question. It's a bit of a tricky question to ask. Like obviously, I'm in the community and watching the election and, you know, listening to what people are saying. But ultimately, in the creation of the scenarios, I've tried to follow the engagement, the outcomes of our engagement summaries in OCP. So we had goals that were outlined in the OCP that we're trying to achieve on a broad scale across our community. There are certain elements that are really relevant to this planning process. Then we had a really comprehensive engagement process where we had lots of people give lots of input about how they felt the neighborhood should either remain the same or stay the same, or change over time. And I would say those two elements are the, by far, the primary drivers of the development of these scenarios. They have been heavily influenced by what was heard in the engagement activities, and they were informed by policies we have in the OCP. That is what I have put together, and that has had a huge influence on what we are bringing to the community for consideration. What's happened in the election has created the council here that will decide on those. You know, ultimately, what we bring back after we show the scenarios to the community and we'll make a staff recommendation. So I think that's where it plays in more. I think it's your guys' decision on what direction you give us about the scenarios. We'll come back and say, hey, here are the scenarios, here's what was presented to the community, here's what the community said about these scenarios. Now we have to make a decision, we'll make a recommendation. But, you know, now who sits at the table will say, hey, for these different sub areas, this is what we think you should do. And that will have the major direction that came from the election.
Councillor Greenlaw.
Thanks, through the chair. I was just wondering, does staff have a clear delineation of the sub areas?
Absolutely.
And is that, is that map available to the public?
Not at this point.
Okay. And then I was, I was also wondering, with your scenarios, the three scenarios, do you have specific sub areas in mind that would fall into the, into the different categories?
Yeah, so for each of the six sub areas, there are three different scenarios. So for example, in, let's see, in the commercial area, we have three different scenarios. Those scenarios outline what are the land uses that would be supported at each of those different scenarios? What are the heights that would be supported? And what are the densities, the floor area ratios that would be supported? And then we've, so we've got those details. We'll have a description that says, you know, here's the thought on scenario A, B and C, what they describe it briefly, show the metrics, and then visual representations. So we have very specific information that shows three different future scenarios for each of the six sub areas. Does that answer your question, or did I miss it?
Yeah, I think so. Basically, I mean, it's basically like, do you have a sub area in mind when you say this sub area will have a one-story increase?
Absolutely, like, what I did here, it's, we're still refining the information and packaging it in a way that will be, make it accessible and accessible to the community so that they can understand it. So we're going through that process. We think it's important for council to be aware of what's coming. And we have new council members, so we want to go over the background. And there has been such a high level of concern about potential outcomes that I put in a bit of information about what kind of scope of height changes we're talking about to provide people with some comfort that some of the earlier concerns, we're going to propose six stories across the whole Garibaldi Estates, were not what is going to be reflected in what's coming.
Thanks.
The word cohousing jumped out at me in this report because I don't recall seeing that word in previous discussions. So I want to do a check in here. The Canadian Housing Cohousing Network describes cohousing as compact self-contained private dwellings with shared spacious community amenities like large dining room, large kitchen, recreation spaces, meeting rooms, children's play spaces, guest rooms, workshops and gardens. Is this what staff is referencing in using cohousing in this report?
Yeah, so cohousing would be an emerging idea that I think, you know, in my professional planning opinion, could help address some of the things that have come out of both the OCP and the engagement. So it's a tool that's being presented as an option for consideration, irrelevant of the different densities that are proposed as an add-on that we may want to consider as something that, there are some opportunities to support cohousing. They're limited, but they are things that can be done. And it's a topic that I think is relevant to some of the concerns I've heard and some of the goals that we would like to try to achieve through, you know, the strategic plan from the last council.
Okay, great. And to have one additional question. I'm hearing some conversation in the community around a phrase that is density targets. And when I hear that phrase discussed in the community, my mind goes to the growth management boundary. But I'm hearing a perception that there is a lack of density targeting in this work and in the community generally. So I'm wondering if you could spend a moment talking about this notion of density targets and whether as a community in our current planning, we have such targets or do not?
Yeah, density targets are something that you'll see in the OCP in one of the considerations for sub area planning. The reason it's in there is that certain levels of density will support servicing. Well, and so actually, at that time, some of the conversations we had internally was, you know, are there certain levels of density we should be trying to achieve to try and minimize the costs of infrastructure across, you know, the housing and, or the people that are living in the neighborhood and across the community? It is a challenging thing to try and address. And in further conversation with the engineering department, what we've, what's been clarified for me as a planner is that ultimately, the more people you put on any piece of infrastructure, the lower you bring the price down per individual on there. So it's a concept that we had more applicable, that list that's in there is identified as, here are a set of things that may be considered in some areas of the community when doing neighborhood planning, and they're to be selected as appropriate. I think one of the reasons that wound up there is out of concern for if we had greenfield development on the periphery of the community, and we knew that the infrastructure would be expensive to try and service those areas, would we want to identify a density target that would be appropriate to ensure that the extension of infrastructure to that neighborhood would be something that could be borne by the people that were there or be equitably spread across the community? In this area, the infrastructure is already in place. If we add more residents, we are improving the cost per person to maintain that infrastructure. At this point, using a density target, to me, seems less relevant than finding the density that is appropriate, given the response from the community to what we're presenting. So we haven't incorporated density target development into this project. It is definitely a challenge and requires a lot of analysis around the cost of infrastructure, and that is something we're not pursuing. So at this point, we haven't put it into the program.
Thank you. Council, quick check around. Any final lingering questions, or can we move to the staff recommendation? Mayor Herford.
Sorry, could you remind me the timeline again on the next step? When we can get some more of these questions answered? Did I hear you write early February?
Yeah, in the first half of February, our intention is to bring out the material through Let's Talk Squamish and then initiate meetings in the second half of February, closer to the end of it. So that's, those are the two next major steps that we're aiming for.
Council, we have a staff recommendation to simply accept this report, moved by Mayor Herford and seconded by councillor Stoner. Any comments? Councillor Stoner.
Just briefly, thanks again for the update. I think probably the challenge that you have in front of you right now is trying to balance the amount of information that comes with 18 different permutations in a small area and how we actually communicate that out in a way that is digestible and accessible and leads to productive and fruitful conversations.
And leads to productive and fruitful conversations. But I think that from what I'm hearing, the work that's been done to date is responsive to what we've heard from the community. The direction that was set by past council and our O C P. And hopefully, the next set of conversations will really help allow us to dive in to the detail of what that really looks like on a on a more nuanced basis for our community. Given all the options that will be on the table. So that to me is exciting, and I think it'll be a good conversation to have at the start of twenty twenty three, just to pick up on Counselor Peddingale's point. Of having councilors in those small group conversations, I'd be happy to attend as well. I think they were really valuable from my perspective. And I think, given the nature of them. Typically, you don't invite counsel, but it's an open invitation and some of us come and the risk is that all seven of us show up and there's only seven people engaged. So I think scheduling us in helps just make sure that we don't overpower the conversation. But we're really there to listen instead, so that would just be my thought. Thanks.
Other comments? I'll speak in favor of the staff recommendation and echo Counselor Stoner's comments about council's involvement in the process. I thought that. My participation in the meetings that I attended in the early stages was valuable for me. And I think. Aided in in the process. And also in supporting the recommendation, I want to address the sentiment that I've heard over and over again since this neighborhood planning process started. There's a belief that our planning department is pushing an agenda with this planning process. This process was and still is being driven by the seven elected officials at this table and nobody else. And so for anyone who's feeling anger over what the District of Squamish staff have presented today, in the past, or what's going to be presented in the future. I just simply request, please bring your anger to me. Or bring your anger to the folks that are elected to listen, to hear the feedback. I signed up to hear that and our staff members didn't. And I don't expect that they should. So for the hardworking professional planners that are doing the assignment that they've been given by council. I I thank you for the hard work that has been done so far and this update today. Our planning staff doesn't deserve to be attacked for doing the work that the elected officials have assigned, so. I will call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, our next item is a Community Climate Action Plan Implementation Presentation. And we'll just do a quick reset of the room so that Mr. Pickett can. Set up. Yeah, let's do a five minute recess, Mr. Pickett, so that you can get your presentation, so we'll come back at eleven forty five. Welcome back. Thanks for joining us, those that are online, for this morning's committee of the whole meeting. This is the final item in this morning's committee of the whole. And it is a Community Climate Action Plan Implementation Activity Update, and joining us for that is Ian Pickett. Take it away, Mr. Pickett.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Ian Pickett. I'm the manager of sustainability and climate change here at the District of Squamish. And we're here today to provide an update on progress related to implementing the Community Climate Action Plan or the C cap. I'm joined by Gary Buxton, our man, general manager of planning and sustainability. And the rest of the sustainability team is also on hand to answer questions. This includes Laura Witten Zellner, Shannon White, Dora Gunn and Karine Ledoux. So we will start today by just giving a brief background, and then we will highlight progress on some of the actions in the C cap. Given that there's a hundred and twenty two, we certainly can't go over all of them. But we do definitely invite feedback or questions on on any of them. So hopefully, we'll be able to give the lion's share of this time allocation to questions, discussion and feedback. So just for background, the District of Squamish has committed to achieving a forty five percent emissions reduction by twenty thirty compared to a twenty ten baseline. This, the pathway to achieve this is laid out in the C cap. And a couple of assumptions and scope limitations in the C cap is, one, we are limited to scope one and two emissions. So this does not include scope three emissions, often known as embodied emissions or. Greenhouse gas emissions associated with creating the goods and services that we enjoy. Another major underlying assumption is that we have ample access to low carbon hydroelectricity. So things like renewable energy generation, although noted, are not a major priority at this point. The C cap consists of six big moves which relate to our main categories of emissions. So these are waste, which is about twenty percent of community emissions. Transportation, which is about fifty percent of community emissions. And buildings, which is about thirty percent of community emissions. Finally, big move six is a catchall organizational actions, which is designed to. Create plans and policies and procedures that feed our ability to reduce emissions in all three categories. So each big move has a number of strategies and each strategy is a number of associated actions for a total of a hundred and twenty two actions that make up the plan. So it is difficult to give a. An indicative gauge of C cap process to progress to the point that we would like to. A lot of the updated emissions values are hard to come by, and the way that our emissions were calculated makes it very difficult for us to to do an annual update. There's also varied levels of information about where we are with respect to projected outcomes for each big moves. But the projected reduction. In the C cap is fully hinged on the implementation of the actions. So a really good indicator is how we're doing related to each of the the actions. So as a broad review of the hundred and twenty two actions that we need to implement by twenty thirty. Just under half of them, fifty six are completed or have a clear pathway to completion or are ongoing. There's a number of them that we can't just kind of check off and move on to the next thing. Things like outreach and engagement are things that we feel like we're doing a good job of now, but we're going to have to keep keep doing these going going forward. We have thirty seven of the actions that we've initiated or made meaningful progress toward. Happy to note that that's a fairly big uptake from the May twenty twenty two update. We have not yet begun twenty twenty three, and at this point, we have decided not to pursue six of them. Given technology changes or direction changes, some of them are a little bit redundant and we feel like we've addressed them through other mechanisms. We're happy to report that we've secured just under one point five million dollars to date for ongoing actions. So this is just the external contributions by outside organizations, does not include matching District of Squamish time or contributions. This does not include the money secured for the larger G I C B grant for Brendan Center. And this does not include the local government climate action program funding, which is allocated to all communities. So for last year, this year and next year, we are committed to receive a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars per per year. So the L G cap is the successor to the CARIP funding. So we are thankful, we are grateful to to the provincial government for putting sustained funding to communities. And also appreciate Mayor and Council writing that letter to the U B C M. I believe it was about eighteen months ago, expressing significant concern. And as we talked about before, for Squamish, it's a concern, but for smaller underserved communities, it's a it's a major, it was a major concern because that hundred and fifty three thousand or. It's tiered to population, but that money might be all some communities have to dedicate towards climate action. So this update is focused on. Recent progress since May, but want to highlight some major initiatives that are ongoing. Some of them are note our our landfill gas collection system. Substantial ongoing work on Brendan Park, our municipal energy and emissions plan. And what we believe is quite a strong record of regional collaboration. This image is from our website. This is an explainer of the landfill gas collection system. I do believe we have done a reasonably good job of communicating our actions. But this is something that has to be an ongoing. We have to continue to improve and and work on that. So now we'll switch gears and talk about our recent ongoing and upcoming actions. These have been extensively overdue overviewed in the memo that we've created, but again, only going to highlight a few here and there. So for big move one, close the loop on waste, we continue to offer many events related to waste reduction. Recent events include a clothing swap, a mending workshop, Velo Velo Fix Station at the September Go By Bike Week. And this screening of the movie Scrap, which was really focused on waste and reduction. I was able to attend the movie myself, and I can say that all of the people there who weren't proximal to my kids seemed to really enjoy it as well. It's a really, really beautiful film. Our lateral expansion work continues, led by our solid waste, integrated solid waste expert Shannon White. This is a huge project and we are with large diversion opportunities and reduction opportunities, including landfill gas and circular economy initiatives. We're happy to report that the zero waste strategy has been completed. The two images that you see are from our Zero Waste Strategy Stakeholder Committee meetings. We are very fortunate to have a large number of passionate, knowledgeable people in our community that helped us steer this this endeavor. We are also investing pretty heavily in circular economy work in close collaboration with our economic development team. So this year, we are one of ten municipalities participating in the Circular Cities and Regions Initiative. And we're enjoying a lot of support to help move our own initiatives forward. The circular economy work right now is focused on three areas, food, textiles and embodied carbon. For big move two, shift between the shift beyond the car, we we continue to work largely in lockstep with our our planning group. Our transportation planner, Dora Gunn, continues to work with Moto to to expand our car sharing network. Moto has recently added a third vehicle downtown and a fourth in Denville is proposed. The district is working toward open street days for twenty twenty three. So we're beginning to discussions with local groups and businesses to support this event. Like last year, we plan to include bike valets and also. Communications for attendees to get their get to the event without cars. Are we have initiated a transit project with U B C planning students. And the students have so far been engaged in a pretty significant literary view. And what they've done is identified five major communities that have are similar size and often similar kind of opportunity level economically related to transit. And they've been showing kind of teasing out lessons of how these communities have really moved forward proactively with transit. The image on the right is from the interim report. And we're really lucky, once again, we've lucked into a really ambitious group of students that are really, really diving into this work. Our transportation planner continues to work with our capital team to improve our active transportation network. Some notable infrastructure projects include. The top image is the Pioneer Phase One Multi-Use Path. The middle image is improvements to the. Oh. Who's got it? Oh, yeah, the Highlands Way South Roundabout. And we also have a new crosswalk crosswalk at Pia Pitalokri. The Skyline Drive Uphill Bike Line improvements are in progress. For decarbonizing transportation, we got external funding from Plug N B C to create a guidebook and do a webinar about multi-unit residential buildings charging. What we're really working toward is trying to enable these M E R Bs to do E V ready strategies. What happens in the absence of them is a couple of lucky homeowners within these get the available electrical capacity. But if you look at it all as a whole, you can usually enable a lot of a lot of homeowners to to get level two charging capacities. And if there has to be an upgrade, at least you can share fairly share that rather than just getting a few winners and then everyone else is is on their own. We are almost ready to share a fleet assessment with telematics data. The we just passed the one year mark yesterday, actually, so we have a full year of essentially really detailed G P S data on our fleet. It shows how, where and to what extent all of our vehicles are used, and that's going to be really meaningful to help us understand. What can be electrified and how quickly and what the cost is of that. We are just beginning in the end of January, we will be offering incentive top ups for E V readiness infrastructure. There's a number of different actions that we are we are topping up government rebates. One of which is a thousand dollar rebates for the creation of E V readiness plans in in M E R Bs. And finally, we had a really exciting E V Expo event on September seventeen. Taking advantage of really, really good weather, we had over five hundred people come by Junction Park and look at about a dozen different E Vs. And had a really fruitful discussion with lots of questions and answers offered. Special shout out to Public Works for letting us, enabling us to park within Junction Park, which was a just taking advantage of the proximity to the to the market was super valuable. So really appreciate that. For big move four, decarbonize existing buildings. One update of note is that we are participating in two studies related to the Adventure Center, which is a large consumer of our municipal corporate energy. So the first study looked at the exterior and it recommended dynamic glazing that tints the windows in response to different sunlight levels. Allowing light and heat to enter the building or not at different times of day. Given the large number of south facing windows, that's a very significant energy implicated. The second study, which was just completed in December, identified different opportunities to upgrade the H vac systems at the Adventure Center. Concurrently with upgrades that are enabled through the Tourism Grant Project. So the gas-fired rooftop units could be replaced with an electric air source heat pump or potentially a gas absorption heat pump. There is an opportunity to have a large grant for gas absorption heat pumps. However, the study indicated that electric source heat pumps are probably the the superior option, given their larger greenhouse gas reductions. And there's less additional kind of infrastructure needed to support those. The gas absorption heat pumps would require a large amount of ducting and piping, which would kind of eat eat up that that grant. The hope is to integrate heat pumps in about twenty twenty seven with along with an upgrade to the roof and other other retrofits. So just taking advantages of economies of of doing it all together. We have retrofit assessed has been live since May fifth. And it's moving along well. We've had a lot of good conversations with community members. We've had a lot of interest, but there's definitely some lessons that we are learning. This is this is a tough nut to crack, supporting people to retrofit their their homes. In May, we are going to be embarking on our second year of the program. And a couple of the big, the big priorities that we want to build into the into the second iteration of it is an expanded suite of offerings. So looking more toward the houses as a system, fenestration, envelope upgrades. And looking at those in lockstep with just not just a heat pump, there's also efficiencies associated with that. For example, if you can make your building much more efficient. Then maybe you could get away with a smaller and less expensive heat pump. One other large challenge that we've we've consistently faced is contractor capacity. The contractors in this area are so busy, it's it can be difficult to get them to the table. Because they have plenty of work to do as it is, so we're looking looking to expand contractor capacity. Trying to invite new contractors to participate in the region and trying to get them as well informed as possible. So for example, one thing we're trying to offer, trying to work towards doing is offering courses that give the contractors credits towards their professional development. So that they're so that it's definitely to their advantage. For big move five, as Counselor Anderson just mentioned in the last, the last presentation. We are excited that the Embodied Carbon Guide for B C Communities just came out in December twenty twenty two. It's the culmination of a lot of modeling and research, evaluation of local government levers, and then the resultant guide for B C communities. One thing that I found really interesting is if you look at the image on the right, there's a huge kind of. Similarities between what came out of this, how the guide is structured and the waste hierarchy. So it's really important to to remember that, you know, we tend to to think about materials and and. So it's really important to, to remember that, you know, we tend to, to think about, um, materials and, and clever ways that we can build, minimize our waste. However, there, there might be large opportunities to, uh, you know, if you look at the largest one, it's build nothing. If there's a chance to, to get away without a new structure, that can be the largest greenhouse gas emission savings. Finally, for big move six, uh, some larger organizational actions that we've been thinking about. Uh, we're in the process of updating our website, making it, uh, more vertically integrated, so it can be more easily, uh, you can go, go through it more easily with a mobile device, uh, also making a little less overwhelming. We've kind of been adding, slowly adding more and more PDFs, uh, to the point where now it's a little bit, it's, there's a little bit too much on it. The long-term, uh, participated in a couple of really exciting webinars about negative emissions technologies. And when we're trying to get towards 2050 and be net carbon, uh, carbon neutral, that's something that's going to have to become a bigger part of the, the conversation. And finally, we've reinvigorated an adaptation working group. And we're thinking about how to, how or if to upgrade our adaptation strategy. And maybe there'd be opportunities even to incorporate adaptation into a C cap update in the, in the future. So in summary, we believe that we're making continued, significant continued progress towards the C cap actions. However, also acknowledge that there is a lot, long way to go still. And we are looking forward to a fulsome review of the C cap in 2024, where we can really look about where we, where we've been doing well, what we have to update, how technology has changed, et cetera. And at this point, we would like to welcome questions and feedback, uh, definitely, uh, invite any difficult questions that I'll happily defer to other members of my group to answer. And oh, just a final shout out, we have one of the country's first electric garbage trucks in our, in our midst. I think largely related to the fact that our landfill is so picturesque, it's a, it's a good backdrop. Hey, thank you very much.
Um, thank you for the presentation and, uh, I see councillor Greenlaw and I'll go next to councillor Stoner. Go ahead councillor Greenlaw.
Thanks. Um, through the chair, there's been a lot of talk of people moving to electric vehicles. And I was wondering if the municipality has done anything about approaching some of the local, um, car dealerships about switching their fleet over to E V and promoting the, the sales of electric vehicles.
Through the chair, uh, it's a good question. We, we're certainly doing what we can to, uh, to encourage and support electric vehicles. Our, our fleet work to date has focused on our own municipal fleet. We, we work really closely with Whistler and right now we're kind of, Whistler is taking a, a little bit more of an aggressive lead on, on electrifying other fleets. There's, for them, there's a few more opportunities that are probably going to happen a little bit more quickly than our fleets. So right now, Whistler is doing a more detailed fleet electrification study that we're hoping to hop on the, on the heels of. But I think what you're asking is more for just not the fleet of those vehicles actually encouraging the sale. Um, and Mr. Buxton or others might want to weigh in, but unfortunately I think as a local government, there's, you know, we're, we're doing what we can to, uh, to provide information, uh, to provide more electric vehicle charging infrastructure, things like E V readiness plans and M R Bs and small, small top-ups to E V, uh, infrastructure. But I don't believe that we're able to do a lot to, to promote or to promote sales in the area.
Through the chair, I think that's probably a function better of provincial and federal programs, which are, which are in place for, there are rebate programs that I think will be far more effective. So we, we would piggyback on those rather than jump in on that.
Yeah, okay. Cause I, I tried to look at some of the dealerships in town and it's really hard to actually physically purchase an electric vehicle within Squamish. And anyways, I was just wondering if there was room for synergy there, right? Because it's, it's good for the local businesses and it's good for people, especially if we're trying to transition into electric vehicles. Okay, thanks.
Thanks councillor Greenlaw, uh, councillor Stoner followed by councillor Penningill.
Thank you. On the topic of E Vs and the incentive, proposed incentive top-ups, uh, one of the incentive tops of top-ups says it's for E V ready infrastructure installation. Just wondering if you can speak a little bit more to that because our zoning by law actually requires new builds to be E V ready. And so what's the differentiation here and why are we providing a top-up?
Sure. To the, to the chair, the, this is for the, uh, like, uh, existing building. And so the E V ready infrastructure installation is, uh, in multi-unit buildings. We will provide a top-up of $200 for, of a maximum for, for $2,000 for, um, for an existing building, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then, um, in the work planet speaks about the disc ongoing discussions with Hydro around the electrical capacity. I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit more to how those conversations are going and where the biggest risks are.
Through the chair, unfortunately, I, my take is that the conversations have been limited to us identifying that this is, this is an issue. Um, and but that, I feel like the feedback has been taken well by, by B C Hydro. And it's just, um, it's, it's largely a reflection of the, the significant costs associated with, uh, with electrical upgrades and they're not very predictable. You know, often you can get more electrical capacity almost for free for a while. And then if you're the luck, if you're like the 11th person in, in line, all of a sudden there's this major upgrade. And that, and, and it's not even that clearly laid out that, um, how those costs are distributed. Like if you upgrade it and then the next 11 people get to benefit from that, how are those costs shared? So, um, unfortunately there, I don't think there's been action, but at least the understanding of that and that, that communication that this is a really, um, is a big impediment to electrifying existing buildings. Thank you.
Yeah. And I know we're not the only community that's dealing with this. And so I wonder if this is an area of advocacy that we might want to add to the tracker uh, and just work a little bit more with our, our folks across the province, um, to address it with B C Hydro. Um, I had two other questions, if I may, they'll see how far I can get. You can cut me off what you want. Um, some really great news over, this one's going to be for Mrs. White. Uh, over the break that the rebuild it center has some revived capacity behind it. Um, through that whole process, I did hear that as we transferred our community enhancement grant process to the foundation, we may have missed a step in terms of, uh, we used to provide them an in-kind support for disposal at the landfill. I was wondering if you can speak a little bit to that support and if that's still being, uh, received to the rebuild it center.
Great, thanks. Through the chair. Uh, yeah, that's a great point. So, uh, it is truly great news that rebuild has had a new interest and enthusiasm behind, uh, the kind of the structure of the board of directors and the kind of where the vision is going, which is fantastic. And we have, the district of Squamish has committed to putting one staff member on the board of directors, um, as part of our workaround, um, construction demolition diversion. Um, as to your, your question about the grant, um, or not the grant, but the former grant. So for those who may not be aware, um, there was, uh, some of the nonprofits applied through the grant, the district of Squamish grant and aid process to receive their tipping fees, um, subsidized through the solid waste utility budget. And that was approved by council at that time. And then the process has since moved to Squamish, uh, community foundation. Uh, so, and it's true that that did get lost in that transition because it came from an operating budget. It was less a project per se, um, amongst the other projects that were applied for at the district of Squamish. So it has been brought up by Squamish rebuild. And so staff are looking and working with finance and kind of trying to figure out how we can continue this and what does it look like? There are other communities who, who actually run, um, uh, excuse me, I don't remember actually what it's called, but like a tipping fee waiver for nonprofits that do diversion. And it's, it's incorporated in the bylaw. So for example, the Comox Valley Regional District landfill has a program. Um, but then there's budget, um, implications. So it's something that's on actually incorporated in the zero waste strategy update as an action item. And we will be looking into it. So we're working with rebuild on a one, on one, but excuse me, there are, there are organizations that are impacted like Pearls, for example.
Okay, that's helpful and great to hear that it's on your radar. Uh, my last one will be quick, hopefully. Uh, are we looking at open street day or street days this summer?
Through the chair, that's still up in the air, but we're hopefully, hopefully going plural.
Thanks councillor Stoner. Um, uh, next councillor Penningill, and then I'll follow with councillor Anderson.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so first I got a community energy association newsletter a few days ago and it's a B C wide organization, Squamish and Whistler, but especially Squamish is featured very heavily throughout. And, and so just very pleased and proud of, of the work, uh, our team, your team is, is doing on this file. And, and I also very frequently in different meetings hear about, um, you know, our low carbon building incentive is still very much leading in the province and people are always very interested in how we're doing it. And it's, it's really setting some fantastic leadership. So, uh, I, I think, you know, some of the things we're doing, it's having a big impact locally, but province-wide as well. And so I think it's something we should recognize and be quite proud of as, as a community. So I want to thank all of you for that. Um, a, a couple of things, uh, you know, as I, I read the news, it's a little less happy, you know, the, the pace at which glaciers are melting and sea levels rising and the weather's changing and, you know, mass extinction is happening. Um, I get more and more worried about how we're calculating the G H G impacts of natural gas. Uh, because we know whether you look at a hundred years or 20 years or, or so on, the, the impact looks very, very different. And I think the typical way of, of viewing it is over the hundred-year timeframe, but it really seems like we need to be caring about five to 10 years, given everything we're seeing right now. Um, and my concern in this is that if we're using the hundred-year numbers, uh, when we're trying to evaluate, well, do we go with a, a, a gas system versus an electric system? The math changes possibly drastically. So I'm wondering, you know, where are we in terms of what sort of scope we're looking at? Especially when we're looking at natural gas related things. And is that something that you're already on top of it or something we would need to adjust in the 2024 C cap review? Or I'm just wondering if you can speak to that.
Thank you. Through the chair, uh, really appreciate those positive comments, uh, well, well taken. And I, I will take a second to give a kudos to the community energy association as well. They've been very enabling, uh, for, for us. We've, I feel very lucky to, to be able to partner with them on a, on a number of different, on a number of different fronts. With regards to the G H G impacts of natural gas, I, uh, and that, those different time scales, I, I certainly share with you that, that concern. I do, our, our existing C cap does have an appendix where it does go, go through the G H G, uh, 20-year impacts versus 100-year impacts. What we did find is that didn't, um, you know, they're, they're, they're different, but it wouldn't have really changed our approach. Still like, for example, the landfill gas system is a top priority, electrification is a, is a major priority. So I do think that regardless of the five versus 20 versus 100-year time scale, the, the major directions we want to go are the same, that, uh, that could affect our, uh, our reduction rates in the, in the future. And I, I do believe for, for 2024 with the C cap update, maybe those shorter, the, the shorter lifetime, life cycle, life spans of G H Gs maybe need to be featured more prominently. However, I do believe we would, we'll have to kind of take, uh, direction for the, for the provincial government on that. Uh, Mr. Buxton, please jump in.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, uh, so 4.8 is one that jumped out at me. Uh, and there's a few others where we're involving Fortis and 4.8, it's in contractor training, those sorts of things. And, you know, when I look more broadly at a number of Fortis's activities, they are, in my opinion, still misrepresenting non-renewable hydrogen as renewable gas and trying to use provision of renewable gas as an excuse to expand non-renewable gas. And we see them, in my opinion, um, undermining building electrification at points and so on. So I, I guess I have some concern or wondering, you know, as we're involving Fortis in these programs, how are we ensuring that they're not tipping the scale towards their commercial interests, which is more gas, fossil gas infrastructure? And how we're staying focused on electrification and those sorts of things?
Through the chair, that's a, it's certainly a very valid point and it, it is well taken. The, uh, I, I feel like maybe one good example of a, of, uh, an area where we've been quite careful is Fortis did pay for the, it did assist us in doing the study in, uh, the adventure center. But we, we really benefited from that because we wouldn't have been able to do that study in a timely manner without that external funding, which allowed us to, um, inform the upcoming retrofit that is going through the, the economic development. So, you know, we are, we are definitely benefiting from, from those resources. And, uh, the output of that study, which was done by a, a separate third party, actually recommended against a gas absorption heat pump, which was probably not the, the output that was, um, intended. Uh, so you're, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to dismiss your point. I, I believe it's very well taken, but I, I, I do feel confident that we are, um, we're drawing pretty clear lines and getting external expert information and, um, but that we are, we are as an organization benefiting from those, from those resources to, to move forward.
So thank you. So if I can follow up then on something like 4.8 specifically where Fortis, we're asking them to aid in training, as I understand it, and capacity building, that, you know, it is focused on training for building electrification as opposed to training on installing efficient gas infrastructure.
Through the chair. Okay, that's a good question. Uh, so for, for this one, what we will be doing is our, our plan is, is to get external support from Fortis, which we will then use to hire an expert contractor who will, there, there will be a line drawn there. So we'll get the money and then we'll hire someone external to offer those programs. Though the one area where we might have to be very thoughtful about is, is Fortis might not feel comfortable having, uh, a person like that deliver, uh, air source heat pump installation, for example. So what, then what we will, then what we will do is we will use those resources to offer, um, whip, uh, training on areas where we are aligned, for example, uh, windows, uh, uh, building envelope, et cetera. And then we will use our own funding to add in the electrification. So I, I totally respect if, if you're not convinced by my answer, but I, I do, I, I can encourage you that we are being thoughtful of it. And we are just trying to use Fortis where our, our, our goals align. And when our, our goals don't align, we are using other resources. We're not, not doing something, but we are, we're using it to feed other things. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, councillor Anderson, I have you up next. And just before I go to you, I want to acknowledge that councillor Hamilton has joined us and, um, thank you. I, I don't see you appearing. Okay, good. As, as, as long as that's, um, in hand, uh, and then following councillor Anderson, I have, uh, Mayor Hereford. Go ahead councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett, I'd like to ask, uh, my first question concerns item number 1.1, improving deconstruction practices. And what I'm after is a status update, but I'd like to introduce my curiosity and concern, if I may. Item 1.9 is highlighting the zero waste strategy update. And, uh, it's interesting to read that five-year-old report. It refers among other things to establishing facilities to handle recycling of building materials in a deconstruction project. The item 1.7 refers to circular economy. And Mr. Pickett, you've already highlighted that the three key themes of that initiative are food, textiles and embodied carbon. Uh, in the report that we have from these, the exercise on body carbon, uh, the reference to building materials is vague. In fact, it's ruled out at the beginning as a focus. The item number 1.3 refers to the landfill and its future, uh, enhancing diversion opportunities. And we hear from Shannon White often about the issue of wood waste as a priority at the landfill. So I come to item 1.1 and improving deconstruction practices. Last summer, we saw a remarkable demolition project on Pemberton Avenue, remarkable because of its scale and the lack of recycling and salvage. There were timbers recycled in another community, but, uh, there were lift after lift of two by 10, two by six, two by four and four by four and appliances, dozens of appliance articles, all better than mine in my house. All went to the landfill or not salvaged. So I happened to have an opportunity to interview a very sympathetic developer involved. So I happened to have opportunity to interview a very sympathetic developer involved. And he pointed out two things. Markets for recycled materials is not my world. You should probably think about regulating me. Secondly, we all have to work better at scheduling and creating opportunity and making it work for the developer's schedule, if you like. So I thought that was interesting and valuable testimonials from that developer. But the upshot is, how are we going to be prepared for the next demolition projects and our clear objectives for recycling and deconstruction?
Ms. White.
Through the chair. That's a great question. So deconstruction is, as Mr. Pickett's mentioned, a high priority of the circular economy roadmap as well as the zero waste strategy, tucked underneath the term like built environment, right? And and there is also a key relationship to our landfill's lifespan and capacity and the added value of increasing our lifespan if we're able to keep that material out of the landfill. I just want to clarify that I also spoke to some of the contractors on the project that is being referenced. And so for the appliances that were separated, they did go to a metal scrap metal scrap yard recycler, from my understanding. And there was some discussion with the outreach coordinator at that time with the contractors on site. I can't speak to the details, but we can dig into a bit deeper. But there was some level of deconstruction that I'm not, excuse me, diversion that I'm aware of. That being said, 2023, the solid waste sustainability team is going to be working on. So we've built the deconstruction by law. It's in place. However, what we're doing right now is we've spent Q4 of 2022 really collaborating with other local governments who have similar regulations and just talking about the internal processes as well as doing a lot of internal discussions between the building and planning and solid waste teams. And then looking at the resources or sorry, excuse me, the tools that we use in the kind of the building demolition process. And looking at, okay, now that we have the bylaw in place, how can we ensure that implementation is happening? So that kind of like groundwork research has been happened in, as I said, Q4 of last year. And so it's actually a top priority for 2023. We'll be looking at doing a little bit of tweaking to the diversion report that's required by develop people who are doing demolitions as well as ensuring that, you know, the the I can't remember the actual proper term, but the fee that is taken from is actually taken and applied appropriately. And that there's assessment, these are the pieces we're really just strengthening. And that will impact all future demolitions in town that meet the criteria in the bylaw. Please let me know if I've missed any part of your question on that.
Thank you, Ms. White. That satisfied me on that topic. Chair, I have two other brief questions.
Go ahead.
The Mr. Pickett, the Embodied Carbon Guide that you have had a slide and it's been released as of December. I was reading the original project scope, in fact, that Whistler Council discussed. And it talks about a timeline extending to August 2020 and implementing a roadmap. Is the project complete now? Do you see what do you see as the next steps for release or disseminating that that document?
Through the chair. So we did just, I believe the guide was released in late December of 2022. So we're haven't really thought forward about what will happen next. One step that needs to happen quite soon is where I'm planning a lunch and learn with with staff regarding the guide. There was quite a bit of interest, but very few people were able to attend attend the launch. This so the guide was enabled through through the game changer grant with with Community Energy Association. So I believe another thing that's come up is an embodied carbon community of practice. So about once a month, there's a larger group that that meets. And that was to kind of inform the guide and that's that's continuing. So that'll be that will be a good question to raise at our upcoming meetings. But there is there are some legs associated with that kind of that community. I was actually just in a meeting yesterday where the Vancouver has a program where they are offering incentives to builders that there's a level, I believe it's 200 kilograms of CO2 per meter squared, that they're offering incentives to builders that can go significantly beyond that financial incentives. And they are basically exchanging that financial incentive for information. And they just extended that offer to to us in in Squamish. So it's I don't know if we're going to be able to participate or not. But if if nothing else, we're going to be able to share this with our community of builders to participate. So I am optimistic that there's quite a bit of momentum. We are fortunate to be right down the road from Vancouver, which is among the very top communities in the world in moving forward on this. However, the the Vancouver Charter is a little bit different than ours. So we're gonna it's gonna be a little messier, but really nice that they're they're pulling, moving ahead very productively with this. Thank you.
Thank you. My final question was item 6.9 in the report refers to two employment land and space projects underway. I wonder if there is any idea about when they might come forward to council, if there may be anybody from planning or economic development to address that. I also will just note here that it says, quote, "to support the development of emerging and enabling sectors." It seems to me that one of the lessons or recommendations of the principles report earlier this fall was to keep the core and enabling sectors clearly in mind. And in fact, to quote from that report, actively manage medium industrial. So that's not enabling. Yeah, so we want to have the whole picture addressed. Is there any reports worth coming to your knowledge?
Through the chair. Unfortunately, no one from Economic Development was able to sit in on the meeting today. This is a this was an update from from them. So we're sorry, we cannot provide that update right there.
Very good. Thanks, Councilor Anderson, Mayor Hereford.
Thank you. And thank you for the for the report. It's great to see all these see it laid out in this fashion and to be able to celebrate some of the victories and see also how much work we still have we still have to do. I was curious on the moto piece. I was happy to see an additional vehicle. Both getting a weird feedback. Is that just only in my mind? Anyways, the so the question is, I suppose, I'm happy to see that there's three, which seems to be the number that where this really starts to work. And there's talk of a fourth. I'm just wondering how much of this moto, like, do we have access to the to the data, to the usage? Do we have? How much input are we having into the location of these and the choice of the vehicles and so on? Just there's there's a bunch of pieces here and how much of this is, I suppose, us motivating or pushing the market versus the market sort of pulling us pulling moto in that direction? I'm just trying to understand the forces.
Miss Gunn.
The chair.
Just swing the microphone a little in your direction there.
You bet.
Thank you.
So at this point, moto is largely operating on their own. We do work with them often and are in touch often. And we do have the opportunity to provide input on into the vehicles as well as a lot of input on the location. We actually decide we approve the stall locations. So but at this point, and as far as the data goes, they they do provide that to us when we request it. I actually haven't looked at it just recently, but I have chatted with them and they said the usage has been climbing steadily and is actually at a reasonable level now. So that's the most recent information I have.
Yeah, thank you. That's that's detailed enough for for this session. But I'm really curious as we as we go forward and look at different development scenarios and so on, just understanding the actual impact that these are having today and and where that where that's going. Because that picture is evolving. But I'm happy to see that the the third one's here and that the fourth one's under consideration. I think that that and hopefully the the data, you know, is is driving that. And that's great, not just us sort of pushing or mandating it through some other some other programs. So that's gives me some hope and I look forward to hearing more about it as it comes to our table. Thank you.
Thanks for keeping it concise. Counsel, we're only a few minutes over time, which is a little bit surprising because we came into this session a little overtime. Counselor Star.
If I have time, I'll ask another question. Thanks for the update on the GHT measurement tool. Are we going to be able to incorporate that in our 2024 budget?
Through the chair. That's a it's a great question. I certainly expect so. We are a victim of our own success that we are so far ahead of the other communities and our municipal planning that they are trying to allow the other communities that have partnered in the creation of this to get their own meeps in order. However, I I am optimistic that by the time if 2024 is the deadline for budget, we can push them to say, no, we're gonna we're gonna have to go ahead on this. But currently, unfortunately, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern while another community tries to establish their targets and goals for their municipal emissions. But but all of the information is created and it's 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 ready to go. Thank you.
So we have a special meeting that starts at 1:30. And at this point, we're cutting into our lunch break. So, Councilor Anderson, am I sensing that you've got another question you want to have post?
Chair, I just wanted to offer a couple of brief comments in connection with our treatment of the staff recommendation.
Go ahead.
Then I will move the staff recommendation.
There is no staff recommendation.
It's me. Then my final comments, if you like, and they are just brief. I note that on February 14th, we will have presentations on from staff on both solid waste and circular economy. And that should be a great opportunity to delve deeper into some of the issues that we've highlighted today. A better opportunity than our broad scope of the report in front of us today. Secondly, I'm pleased to hear about the plans for another moto car opportunity downtown or wherever it may be located. However, I'll just note that there had been voices in the community concerned about the present parking space chosen for the new moto car. And it's on Winnipeg Street in a highly congested area with lots of seniors traffic, seniors attending the post office and people attending nearby clinics. And I wonder whether consideration could be given to taking into account congestion at that at that corner and vicinity when we choose a location for this or the next moto car. Thank you.
Counselor or Mayor Hereford.
I'd like to move receipt.
Is there a second or? Seconded by Counselor Stoner and Mayor Hereford will speak to it.
Thank you. Just I'll just reiterate my thanks for for all for all the work on this, for everybody involved. I know there's only a few people in this room, but this this work really permeates through all of our actions as municipality and 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 in a large part of our community as well as people move about and go about their day. So thank you, thank you so much. I look forward to seeing all these all these next step pieces that are that are there, come to this table and for working with everyone involved to figure out a way to move this forward as aggressively as we can figure out to. So thank you so much.
Are there any other comments before I call the question? Great, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And counsel entertain a motion to terminate moved by Mayor Hereford, seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We're back at 1:30 for a special meeting this afternoon. Thank you.